Perfect, okay. Oh, welcome, Randy Lewis here, the mayor, and this is Bountiful City Council Meeting, Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. It's our 7:00 PM regular session. We didn't have a work session today, but normally if you're from the public, we have, when we do have work sessions at 6:00, you're invited to attend those as well. So, we really appreciate those who are here and and we're, we're, we're doing what the governor, governor is certainly wanting us to do and, and Brian Hatch, our director of the Health Department. So, I just hope we all, we can all stay safe and, and healthy. We'll start today. We'll, we'll ask Kate Bradshaw, our councilwoman, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would rise and join me. Flag is on this side this time. Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, for the first time, we, we have, I, I guess you've been here for a while, Father Andrew from St. Olaf's, but he lives here in Bountiful. I've, I've had the opportunity to meet him a few times, and I, I even asked him, I said, I went to him and said, can you help me pronounce your last name? And after he said it three times, he says, listen, everybody calls me Father Andrew. So, I was, I was very grateful for that. So, we were so, again, I don't think we've officially been able to say, welcome to Bountiful as a Bountiful resident, and we really appreciate you being here and offering a prayer for, for us here at our council meeting. So, please.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here with you. And I was born and lived there for almost half my life. The end, for 25 years, I've been a citizen of the United States. I live here in Utah since 1989. In the wild, I consider myself Utah as well. So, thank you very much for this opportunity and let's put ourselves together, spread, and let's get it. In all the Holy Spirit of the Lord, Almighty and loving Father, we acknowledge you today as source of wisdom and goodness among the individuals, but nations and governments. We thank you for the privilege of being able to organize ourselves politically and promote and protect the common good of citizens of this beautiful town, Bountiful, and citizens of our country, the United States of America. Standing on the threshold of elections, we thank you for the wall, which our founding fathers acknowledged and recognized as higher than any human law. We thank you for the freedom of participating in politics without denouncing our loyalty to you. We thank you for the opportunity that this election year could be for us to exercise our solemn duties to vote and to work for the common good. Awaken your people to know that they are not told to escape the world, but rather be a community of faith renewing the world. Awaken them to the truth that the same hearts and hands lift it up to you in prayer, but the heart and hands that must work for God, for our common good. Awaken your people to the truth that human rights begin with human life begin. Awaken your people to respect the dignity of each individual life, thank you to Mary, the family. Awaken your people to their common, to the call, their fighting for justice. Lord God, rejoice today that we are citizens of your people. May that make us all the more committed to being faithful citizens on our true clouds of our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Father Andrew, thank you again for, for being here. We really appreciate that beautiful, beautiful prayer. Thank you. And, listen, this, this is not going to be a long meeting, but it'll be longer than you need for all the busy life that you lead. So, you're, you, you go when you need to. Okay?
Joking to say, people ask me about how to say my name. I said, you sneeze and cough and you close.
May I just say too, the school is looking great.
It is.
Yeah, the construction, it's looking really nice.
Thank you. We did the campus right now and still trying to raise some money for the addition, but right now it's waiting for better times.
Looks good. The parking lot and the work you've, the work you've done.
Overdraining down the knee, and arteries and some improvements outside.
Have a wonderful evening, Father. So, this is the time that we have for public comment. For those of you who might be here for public comment, we have 10 minutes, two minutes for each person, and I'm glad that we have you here. If you'll just give your name and, well, we know you, but if you'll give your name and your address, we're really happy to hear from you.
Yeah, Sean Spade down here on parole.
Yeah.
So, I come to you with an idea, I'm illuminating in my head. That is still flawed and without that information, but usually this coming year, for much of my time, I would spend, would spend memory, Christmas memories and writing them. Christmas is that I remember all sort of things. Well, I miss that. And so, I come to you with a proposition, I guess. I would like to write your favorite Christmas memory. Should we use it as exhaustion? Or maybe as a way, maybe perhaps use it as a way to give a project community. Father Andrew would be great to enjoy a number of Christmas memories. You might use it as a ebook perhaps. See, website, all hard to think about it all, but I have a little thing for you to write Christmas memories. So, I extend the invitation. If you're interested. Not other than that. I prefer to come back for midnight. That's the best time. I sent it to you, I guess. It will be done. Even the other business offerings. If you like that, that may be of some interest that I'd like to have. I would hope Andrew's in fact, that is.
Good. Could I maybe ask you if you get, you, you might send us a, a text or email with that request, which would help us in reminding and maybe a way for us to kind of get back with you. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anybody on, on our electronic media that would like to say something? Okay, but that will, will end the public comment period, and I will look for a, for a motion on our minutes from our previous meeting on the 29th of September and October 13th. Any corrections or additions?
Mayor, we accept the minutes of September 29th and October 31st, 2020, as written.
I had a change I wanted to propose.
Okay, perfect.
I'm sorry, Chris, if you don't mind. So, I emailed you, but it was just before the meeting, so you may not have, have time to, to take a look at it, but I'm asking for a change on, on page eight of the packet, starting with line 30. It's just my little summary of my remarks, and so I'm proposing the minutes read as followed. Councilwoman Harris discussed several items that she feels are important. Owner occupancy is very important, and if the dwelling looks like a single-family dwelling, including parking, that will preserve the feel of neighborhoods. On the other hand, details like square footage and bedroom requirements within the footprint of the home are not important as those restrictions impede on property rights. She would like the city to lessen square footage requirements and parking requirements if the negative impact to neighbors is minimized through restrictions such as owner occupancy and parking requirements. So, if, if the council members are amenable to that change, I'd like to propose that we approve the minutes with that correction.
Did you have a, did you have something, Gary?
A, a comment or a suggestion, because they're rather lengthy, the changes, you could just simply not approve the minutes tonight, and we could incorporate those, and then that'll give everybody a chance to read them. That's one option, but if you're comfortable with what Kendallin said, then you can approve it. But either way, let you know, we don't have to approve the minutes tonight if, if everybody would like a chance to read them.
Sure.
So, anybody, anybody feel strongly about?
Well, I think it'd be nice to read that before we approve them.
Okay, so, let's, let's postpone this particular approval until our next meeting. So, we don't need to vote on that?
Okay, I would just a motion to continue.
Okay, a motion to continue.
I make a motion, we continue to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And second?
I'll second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council report, Richard.
I'm nothing this evening. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, Kendallin?
I want to thank Kate for this beautiful mask that has the Bountiful logo that she paid out of money of her own pocket and donated to us. It's fun to be able to represent Bountiful with this mask everywhere I go.
Very nice. Kate?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Millie? Millie's on mute.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Sure.
Um, you can't, can you see me?
No, but are you well?
Okay. Oh, yes. Everyone, everyone is fine. We're just counting down the days until we're supposedly in the clear. Um, thank you for asking. My council report is that the youth council had a wonderful activity on Saturday. They had to make some changes to the previously planned pumpkin patch, and we ended up doing little goody bags, and we did a drive-by activity, and the kids had a great time. It was really well-attended. We handed out 70 pumpkins and 70 goody bags, and we are just very proud. And this, the council is on track to plant a tree, to replace one of the trees that the youth council planted, I believe, 30 years ago, that was blown down in the windstorm on Fourth North, in the Fourth North Park. So, we're excited about that.
Great. Millie, anything else, Millie?
Nope, that's all.
Thank you. And Chris, oh, I ended with you because you might have a comment or two about the park.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had in the last two Saturdays, open houses. We had two open houses. We have had 1,000 plus in each open house. We socially distance. We wear masks. We sit in as families or individuals so that we stayed within all of the COVID rules. It was very exciting to see people come through. We had a family of a World War II veteran, a Korean. He was also in Korea. He came in his uniform, came from Idaho. He had 20 of his family from Montana, Utah, Arizona, all show up, and went through a lot of tears, a lot of tears. Since the park's been open, we've been averaging 200 to 300 people per day that are coming through the park. We usually have a member of our foundation there to guide them through the park and show them how they can find the name of a veteran on the wall. We have a number of flags and artificial flowers being left at the bases of these individual monuments by individuals that have come through representing their families. This week, the eagle is going up. We're really excited to see the eagle. It's going up in the front part of the Bountiful Veterans Park, maybe tomorrow or the next day, which we're excited to see that. And we have an open house, which will be on 11, which is November 11, which is the date, and 11:00 AM. So, that should be easy to remember. We have an invited list, mayor's helping us with, with political individuals. The list is coming together. We are limited to under 200 with inside the park. We're working next week on, on social distancing and chairs and how we'll arrange both those inside the park. So, that's been kind of a challenge that we're doing. November the 7th, we're having one last open house. There's been such a number that want to come, so we decided we'll have one on November the 7th, from 11:00 to 2:00. So, that would be the last of our, of our open houses. One last thing I might mention is that we did an evaluation, if we, if we paid for this park with money to contractors, we'd be approaching $2 million. The beautifulness of this park is, we have not had one individual that's participated that has charged us full amount, and most have given us either discounts or they have done it free, which is really, really exciting considering that we, we started this park, you know, just six months ago. Six months ago, and where we are right now. So, I want to thank the city especially for your support and helping us, and helping us skip things down, and we are very fortunate to have the piece of property that we're able to build a park on. Could not be better. We had the last individual that came through last Saturday, had a cowboy hat on. He went through, he got in his car, and he came back as I was giving him my truck, and he said, I worked for the federal government in Washington DC for 25 years. I retired, brought my wife back to Bountiful. We live here. He said, there is no park in Washington as nice as this park. Thank you for building. So, thank you, Councilor.
Thanks for that report, Chris. I, Chris, I also, I, I really appreciate you following those guidelines that were given to us from the county. And I know that I saw our commissioner, County Commissioner Bob Stevenson today. He said he showed up the other day, and he wanted to walk around, and somebody said, nope, you can't do it until there's somebody, somebody escorts you. And I guess it was you, Chris, who came and escorted him, and he was just taken back by how beautiful that park is. You know, and I think a special thanks ought to go out to Ron Mortensen for how many days he has spent, when he probably wasn't even assigned to be over there and watch out for that park and to help people around. So, Ron's done a really nice job with, with, with that. You can tell what he loves, and he loves that. So, thank you very much. Any, any other things that have come to anybody's mind? If not, I'll look for a considerable approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 paid October 5th, 12th, and 19th, 2020. I'll look for a motion.
Second.
Thank you. And a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Alan, we'll turn this next item over to our Director of the Power Department, and thank you.
Yes, Mayor and Council, it's a privilege to be here tonight with these items that we've got. The first, first item that we have on the agenda would be the approval, or asking for approval of J, J-CRA Architects. What we've got is we've got that piece of property that's on the north side of our property, that we're looking to put a fence around it, put the asphalt drainings that goes into it, as well as some carports, and we can put our wire and transformers for the inventory where it sits out. What we find over the years is, we buy transformers, and they look like they're old sometimes before they leave our yard because the sun bake. We also have our wire that's on there. So, we've identified in the budget money to do this project. We did go out and get, had J-CRA, who's given us a bid to do just the architect for $77,837. The estimate for the property is 1.4 million. We have a little over 1 million identified, 1.1 in this year's budget. The project is, we're looking to go out to bid in the spring, and it will actually go through July and August before it's actually committed. So, we'll have to put some money into next year's budget to finish paying for the tail end of it. But this would include the project of putting the drainage from the water, the carports along the north side, extending our fence back around, given that accident, finish that area through there. So, we did meet with the Power Commission this morning. It does come with their recommendation. So, it would be staff and the Power Commission's recommendation that we approve the, the fee of $77,837 for JRC Architects to work on the property on the north side that we purchased a couple years ago.
That amount, was that left off the record here, that I suppose we all put it on? Is that right? I don't have that amount. I don't have that amount on, on number six, do I? So, okay, fine. So, if there are any, if there are no questions for Alan on, on this item, I'll look for a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the contract for $62,418 for Nixter for the power poles, heat transformers.
No, no. One previous to that.
I'm ahead of myself, Alan.
I really liked it.
The JRC Architects contract for the development of the piece of property north of the power.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please.
So, I'm guessing that you didn't put this out to a general bid because you, they had done the other building, and they had, you've worked with them?
Yeah, and, and this is actually a service, where as a service, we don't actually have to go out bid for services, but they are the, the company, I mean, they're the same architects of doing City Hall, but they're the ones who helped us with our remodeling of our current building. They're the ones that put the other parking lot addition. So, they're very familiar with what is already there. So, it makes sense for them to, to follow on through, and they did a great job, and we didn't have any complaints that right through the process.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good question. So, did I get a second? Oh, thanks, Kate. Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Millie, are we giving you a long enough time to, to vote? Hopefully.
Yes, aye.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Sorry about that. Had a frog in my throat.
We just don't want to forget you out there. All right, next item.
The next item we have on the agenda is, our transformer inventory is running low as it is, and we're, need to go out and purchase some more inventory transformers that we place. Some of these will be identified relatively quickly, and others will be sitting in the yard for a while. But basically, we've looked at what we need, what moved out, and went out to bid to do these. And this, what we're looking at is proposing is the low bid, but it's also, as we evaluate the losses, it's still the low losses, low bids, so it's a great possibility that way. So, we're looking at purchasing 23 transformers, and the low bid was from Anixter Power Solutions for the G Prolex, which has a nine to 10-week delivery of the total cost of $62,418.15. And if you notice on the staff report, the other bids on top of this were like 22 weeks out. So, it tells you where we are right now as far as getting materials, and why it's good to keep an inventory in stock. You know, you're getting close to a half a year on, on delivery on, on materials that we need. So, it would be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation that we accept the low bid from Anixter Power Systems for the total of $62,418.15.
Thank you. We've already had a motion. I'll look for a second.
Second?
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good, we've got you quick now. Okay, Alan, next item, number eight. Oh, okay. So, Millie, was that a, an aye? Approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, the last item we have may take just a minute longer. And this is the project that we have been looking at since 2012. You know, we did have a work session in July. I thought maybe I might just sort of go through some of the highlights that has changed or developed since that point. You know, my line is, I still need to say, Bountiful still needs a long-term power supply. That, that isn't anything that's going to change. We've still got our San Juan coal-fired project that we're shutting down at the end of June of 2022, which will leave us a deficit of five megawatts at that point into the future. And I'm going to come back and just want to reiterate, as we go through here, this is one of those projects that staff and the Power Commission still think is a great project and has a lot of promise. It has obviously some complexity. There's a lot of dollars involved with it. As we know, building a project, there could still be a lot of hurdles, but we still believe it would have been a good project. So, I just want to make that a thing. But some of the things that we've done is, is we initially, when we came in in July, the staff of UAMs and the board approved a 60-day notice. As they started coming in to become apparent that the DOE grant wasn't going to come in, so we voted and we extended. So, we have until October 31st, or basically Friday, to take advantage of this off-ramp or move forward. So, basically, we're up here tonight, in the last week of it, to move forward. The other thing that we have is, we talked about the jump program, the joint-use module program, which we initially signed up for, which at that point, the DOE was going to pay the full capital cost for one module, and they were going to operate it for 10 years, which allowed them, then the participants to get it debt-free at the end of 10 years, which allowed us to have power at one point, delay at 10 years, so we could grow into the other module. It made a lot of sense. Obviously, as that jump program has not materialized, part of the contracts, the notice, and we did get our notice, and you'll notice it's in your packet. We got that just in the, I'll call it in the 12th hour, like you say, about the fifth time trying to get it up to Sean to give it out to you. So, I included it back in. So, they have put us on notice that the jump program has been disbanded, and by that, they've automatically taken 60, 60 megawatts of the project of what had been subscribed back away. That doesn't mean people couldn't step up, but one of my findings, my discussion around the table, is people are not looking to do that. The reason why it was appealing is because they had that 10-year delay. So, so basically, as we were looking at subscription level, little over 200 would put us down into a little over 100 megawatt subscribed, and that was before any of the other people who have basically dropped out of subscriptions. And just as a reminder, the project is slated to be a 720-megawatt project. At this point, we're looking at something just under 100 megawatts of subscription at this point. I will say that the DOE grant did actually come through when the match was able to get it. The DOE grant was just under the 1, 1.334 million, in that range, which is funds that would be coming in for the project over the next 10 years. And it has a declining scale. The money isn't going to come the first year. There's, they'll, they'll put money in the first year and more the second year, and basically spend that over a period of time. But the most money gets spent in year six and seven is the cost and stuff that will up onto it. Again, like I said, they did receive that notice on October the 16th for that. The other thing that we have, in order to get the DOE grant, UAMs, basically being a joint agency, allows some ability to do meetings different than what we have to do. But as you bring DOE money, which would be taxpayer money into it, if you was to bring it straight into UAMs, that would mean they would then become open to more open laws than what we do. The other thing is, is it allow, would allow them not earn up by having a limited liability corporation set up that's wholly owned by UAMs at this point. Should they have found another partner, they could go in here and do this and not have to be under the UAM some, well, given easier ability to get partners. And they go, so, they are starting a limited liability corporation, and that's where the grant actually is going to, not actually directly to UAMs. And with that, they'll have to hire some new personnel in the county to basically administer the grant, and also, they're going to hire a project manager that is strictly dedicated to building nuclear plants, somebody who has some experience. Because obviously, as we plowed along, there's nobody in UAMs that are nuclear experienced. Like I said, they're going to bring, to bring somebody in. So, that is a change that has come along. That is a change that has come along. And the current estimate, they have run the feasibility on their estimate. And they have basically revised it to where the. They come back to the cost would be forty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents per megawatt hour in twenty twenty dollars. Or they're estimating to be fifty-nine point six seven. In twenty twenty or twenty twenty-nine dollars. So like I said, that's kind of an idea of where the cost is. So the cost is still coming in. In the realm of what they had expected with the grant. Obviously, the cost has gone up as we've seen, as we've looked over the last couple of years, it's gone from. Four billion to six billion and and it could still increase. But with the DOE grant at this point, it is still in that realm of what we've been looking at. The the thing that we're looking at again, like I say, is. Currently with the Bountiful of our subscription level with the. Cities who have already noticed that they're coming out, the subscription level is ninety-six megawatts. Which puts Bountiful currently in a little over five percent of the project. So as as we look at it, as we're moving forward. Uh, if we decide not to take this off-ramp, what would be our next options? One of the things that I had asked for was a smaller. Increase instead of going such a big jump to allow to get more subscription. And they did do that, but it's still got a pretty high price tag. And basically, they've come back and said until December twenty-second, when they get the class three estimate. And at that point, it's going to cost U M's share of eleven million. At our current um. Subscription rate, it's going to cost, would cost Bountiful an additional five hundred and seventy-three thousand. But that would give us another off-ramp if we wanted to go until December of twenty twenty-two. If we was to go without anything to the twenty twenty-three, which was the next official off-ramp. It'd be a little bit over a million dollars. Uh, looking at forward into some of the means that we have been meeting with U M's once or twice a week for. Since July, like I said, there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of things that have come back out. Um, and they've got a gentleman who has been pretty well dedicated to trying to find additional subscriptions for it. And he believes in the next two years, he might get an additional ten or fifteen megawatts of all. So that still puts us quite low. On the subscription level. So anyways, as we look at it, as we go through this in the staff report. As we go back through it, you know, we could if we just kept digging, spend more money on to it. But it says, we've come to this point and after quite a deliberation with the power commission this morning and staff. It was going to be the staff and the power commission's recommendation. Regrettably, that we would. Ask that we take the resolution. Twenty twenty dash fifteen, which would basically. Take the city out and run it to zero and take us out of the project before the end of the month. At that point, like I say, the project may go on. The. The plan is that point is is those that were left would have another meeting, the first part in November. And then have an opportunity and the other group may or may not drop or they may move forward and have to decide what happens with the project at that point. But. Like I say, but that would be the staff and power commission's recommendation that. We do drop out of the project and there is a resolution including your pack. Twenty twenty fifteen that we approve and allow you to sign that to have us drop out of project.
Thank you. I suppose we probably have some questions. From the council, uh, any any questions for?
I just, I just want to thank you, Alan. I feel like this has been quite a roller coaster for you and for all of us. Um, I remember first learning about it and being really excited about it and sitting in on some. Meetings and uh about it and it really seemed like and still could, you know, seem like a very promising. Exciting thing to be a part of. And so. I just appreciate you along the way educating us. Um, I feel like there's been many opportunities where you've given us. Education. And then also, I worried, I thought, you know, because you're so. Involved with U M's and and um everything, I thought. Will you be able to be objective, you know, in helping us know what we need to do? And. I'm sure this hasn't been easy, um, this process that you've gone through here. But I I want to thank you because I feel like your information has been good and you've um helped. I mean, I think our best interest is to is to take the off-ramp at this point, but. Um, I appreciate the the roller coaster you've been on and and the work that you've put in for this.
It has been a roller coaster. I will say it is a shame because I believe it is a good project. I'm not so sure somebody won't still build it. We may even have an opportunity to jump back on to it.
Any other questions? Um, I I would say one thing, and that is. We don't know what the future will be. You know, there's a lot of. There's a lot of statements from people about our uh. Sources of energy and where they're going to come from. I wouldn't be a bit surprised if it might be ten, it might be twenty, it might be thirty years, but. This is, this has got a lot of hope for the future, I think. In some ways, but we're doing, I, you know, I feel strongly we're doing the right thing. So I would look for a motion uh. Counsel to adopt that.
Thanks. There's a lot of individual support among members of the power commission. Uh, for the project. Uh, there was uh, there was a a. A sadness, I guess, among the group, I think it'd be accurate. Don't you think, Alan?
I think so.
And uh. The bottom line is that it wasn't the nature of the project that was its downfall as far as Bountiful is concerned, but it was the lack of subscribers. And the lack of folks that are on board to help share in the development costs of that project. So. I'd be happy to make a motion that we officially take action to withdraw from this project by adopting ordinance twenty twenty dash fifteen. And ask you mayor to sign that on behalf of the city.
Second?
Please. Resolution.
For a resolution.
Twenty twenty. Thanks.
And and a second from Kenbleen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thanks, Alan. Yeah.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate all the support and indulgence of putting up with the hours that we have talked about this project.
Well, I think at this point, we're definitely doing the right thing for right now.
And I think so too.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I I was at the beginning, but I don't think uh there's, that's good, Alan. Uh. Are the next couple of items that would have been on our agenda for tonight would have been a couple of public hearings. But I don't think we had anybody for that public hearing. Today, please.
If we could just just get a motion to continue to the to the November tenth meeting for item number nine, that would be great.
Okay, and what about the fact that the other ones to a future day?
Item number ten will still also continue, but it won't be November tenth. We're asking that be continued to a date certain will notice that and make sure that it gets. Put on the agendas.
Good. Can we cover those together?
No.
Just one at a time?
Yep.
Okay, so I would look for a motion uh to uh.
Continue number nine.
To continue number nine until November tenth. And so we do have a date on that.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Oh, by the way, Millie?
I.
Okay, I for. Yeah, I got you. Um, and then the same for number ten, except it will be to a future date, uh, which we do not know at this point.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. And a second. Thank you, Richard. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, those two items will be. Will be delayed. And the last item. Uh, Mr. Galen Rasmussen. Always glad to hear from Galen.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor of the Council. Uh, before you tonight, we have um. Consideration of a janitorial contract for City Hall. And so. Uh, we're closing in to being able to uh get back in that building and that'll be wonderful when that occurs. Um, we uh decided to go out for a request or proposals on uh the new building and uh. Since we had new facilities and things that we are not, we're not cleaning before and just different things that way. And so. Um, it had been a number of years since the contract uh that we had have been looked at. And so we put an RFP out for consideration and had a number of people interested in that. Um, on the twenty-seventh of August, when we closed that on October first, we ended up having six proposals delivered to us. And those are listed before you, uh, Wingfoot Services, Caliber Cleaning Services, EnviroClean. Vanguard Cleaning Systems, Alta Janitorial Services and Bearcom Building Systems, Bear Services. And they're listed in order of uh. Amount for monthly and then the first year and then five. So we asked for a five-year contract. With the opportunity to reevaluate that periodically. And if it turns out we need to go a different direction, do you have that? Capability as does the vendor. Uh, I was assisted in this evaluation by Lloyd Cheney, our city engineer and Todd Christensen, Assistant City Engineer. And we went by the. Um, things we put in the proposal as far as how we would evaluate that. Uh, we asked for uh certain forms to be filled out so we could have. Listing of how what their insurance was like, what their procedures were going to be like. We asked them to fill out a form that would tell us how often they would clean various things and how they would approach that. And then also suggest some. Innovations that maybe have taken place we hadn't considered. And so we had a number of different bases to take a look at that. Um. We evaluated each proposal on content format that they had given to us, how closely aligned that was with the proposal guidelines. We evaluate their qualifications and their demonstrated abilities to be able to perform. Uh, their proposed work plan and their staffing, they would have involved the innovations I mentioned, if they had any, and then the cost of services. With that in mind, we uh just had to look at the um offerings of each one and each one kind of put in their own. Uh. Kind of wordsmithing to how they did things and that that way, we tried to be as close to where we had. Uh, asked for as far as being able to evaluate them. We asked them to use the forms we had and a couple of them were not able to do that. So after evaluating what was offered and the uh dollar figures, we are uh bringing forth the recommendations for your consideration tonight. To accept the second lowest bid, which is um. Three dollars a month cheaper than the lowest bid, just based on uh how we felt that they would be able to. Uh, handle the job and that would be caliber cleaning services and they're out of Tatersville, but they have local. Uh, representatives out here. In fact, they were just awarded the bid for the Recreation District. And so they'll be doing their work as well. Their uh contract of fifteen ninety-eight monthly would be an annual cost of nineteen thousand one seventy-six. With a not to exceed amount of five years of ninety-five thousand eight eighty. So I would just present that for your consideration approval. Answer any questions?
Any questions, please, Kate?
Were any of these uh bidding companies? Um, our prior janitorial company before the remodel? So these are all new players?
They are. We did uh ask our current provider to present a bid and she decided not to do that just based on some business considerations for her.
Any other questions for Galen? Not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to know that we approve this um janitorial contract with Caliber Cleaning Services and the amount of one thousand. Five hundred ninety-nine dollars monthly.
Thank you, Kimble. I'll look for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
I'm a little concerned. As I look at our committee composed of. Galen, Lloyd and Todd. There should have been a woman. No one knows how to clean the woman.
I think you're right.
We need a woman on there.
I should have asked Shannon.
And we'd be sure that that the building will be cleaned to their proper standards. Thank you.
We will.
I'm flattered.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? That is a unanimous decision. Thank you. And. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, Millie. Hey, Millie, stay safe out there.